Well, we have to save six just to do the other thing.
Time certain. Okay, Mr.? It's 5:58.
I was just gonna say we need to tell Mr. Patrick.
I will reopen the regular meeting, yes I will. Did I tell you about something to add, say, whatever?
I want to call an attorney-client session on the E-Rate matter. I think last time we did it, we moved the meeting to from four to three and started it at 3:05, and that made sure we had plenty of time to have our attorney-client session, if that's acceptable to the board. I'd just like to do that the same way.
I think it worked out great. All right.
All right, then pursuant to Florida statute 286.011, print A, closed print, I'd like the Attorney-Klien Executive Conference to gain advice concerning the pending litigation between the School Board of Citrus County, Florida and Regent Bank, Montgomery County, Alabama, case number CV 2009-900737. Subject matter of the meeting shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. The entire session shall be recorded by a certified court reporter, and no portion of the meeting shall be off the record. The meeting shall be scheduled for May 14, 2013, at 3:05 PM. Person's presence shall be R. Wesley Bradshaw and Lee Copeland, attorneys for the Citrus County School Board, Superintendent Sam Hemmle, board members Virginia Bryant, Patricia Deutschman, Thomas Kennedy, and Linda Powers. The transcript shall be made part of the public record upon the conclusion of the litigation. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. It is now 6 o'clock, and we have a time certain. Do we have any citizen comments? Seeing none, we will move to board members' committee reports and other business that needs to come before school board. Goodbye. Goodbye, goodbye. No problem. What does he play?
Catcher first base.
Catcher, all right.
Does he need a hitter?
Cool.
Spike used to call that position Mr. Sweat or Mr. Grunt? Everybody had a little name when it goes, Chucky, Mr. Grunt, I think. Being catcher really hard.
Yes.
Tell them to step up more than it does me.
Okay. Yes, I do, Ms. Powers, thank you.
Just wanted to remind you that tonight is the senior art show reception for the art students at the Pantah. That's the seventh quarter college. It's the eighth quarter college. And last year, it's actually outstanding, they have a great presentation, but the art award is gorgeous, so if any of you can catch us, drop over. It will last from 6 to 9, so kind of say drop in and say hello to the county branch.
All right.
And then if you put on your calendar, the IB awards ceremony is going to be Saturday, April 13. That's this coming season.
No, I thought it was this coming year.
No, that's the banquet.
Oh, what's different?
This is the awards ceremony.
Oh, okay.
It's 5:00 PM Saturday, April 13, at Curtis Pearson. And the banquet, the IB banquet will be April 26. That's Friday, 6:00 PM at Black Diamond, that's the third one.
I was thinking, maybe next year we get Mr. Carter and include that on the sheet, the IB.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Just because it's one wheel, yeah. Thank you.
Linda, maybe would you write that down? And those are the three things.
Great, thank you.
I want to first thank this board and the superintendent for again making the commitment with technology to our students. This is nothing new for this board. This board has been doing this for a multitude of years, and I don't think it's any coincidence why this district continues to be an A district and a high-performing district. And I believe we are on our way to continuing that among the multitude of challenges that we are facing. So, I just, I thank you all for that. A couple of things, I attended the Elementary-Pupil Progression Plan. I felt that went quite well. There wasn't a lot, with the exception in particular of the acceleration piece. And some of that, they are still trying to work through how to document and do the skyward, but they are primarily going to, at least the intention was, to use the RTI model without having to recreate the wheel. And I believe they're working through some of the hiccups. Some of you may know HB 7009 was an educational bill, but included in that bill was the issue regarding facilities and us having to relinquish our schools as part of that. Prior to it being, it was approved in the House, but prior to it being approved in the House, that provision was amended out. So, I'm thankful of that. The House does seem to have a companion bill, and that's one of the many bills on the charter issue. But I think to me, the most critical piece was that facilities piece, and it was taken out of that. The other bill, though, that I really would lift up to you all is one, I think I've sent some of you some notes, I think I've sent you all notes on, and that is HB 7091. And this is about the graduational change of graduation requirements, the testing issues, removing, or having, removing a pass/fail at the middle school and moving it to a 30% of the grade. Precipice, thank you, Ms. Deutschman. And then also, that would be for, at the high school level, geometry. It would also be for biology, and then the other EOCs, with the exception of Algebra I. They, there were several amendments made. Then there was another strike-all, which Mary Jane Tappin had actually talked to them about today and updated when she was here. The strike-all basically put the bill back to the way it was when we had three, it actually had three graduation options.
Oh, they removed all the stupid amendments?
They, well, they didn't remove them all, but they did put a lot of metal back. So, and that was my understanding they were going to do, but it still appears to be as strong as ever. If, this is almost scary, the Department of Education is in favor of it, including that the, the educational, I'm sorry, mine left me for a second. That the Educational Commissioner testified in favor of it on behalf of the governor.
And against the Jeb Bush Foundation.
And against the Jeb Bush Foundation.
Praise the Lord.
Yes.
Praise the Lord.
That's a huge, huge piece.
Because Jeb Bush got him that job.
Yeah, it's, in addition, of course, interestingly, Speaker of the House is very much in favor of this. It's really a priority of his. And the Senate has pretty much, it's, from what I'm hearing behind the scenes, they've pretty much said, "We're just gonna wait till the House finishes their bill, and then we'll just deal with it in conference." And the Senate seems to be wanting to work with the House to adopt what the House is doing. I'm a little frustrated sometimes with Florida School Board Association because I'm wondering, why have they not been talking about this bill? This bill is potentially one of the best possible changes that we've had for our students in a very long time. So, I'm just shouting it from the mountaintops. It's not perfect, but it's a whole lot better than we've had in a multitude of years. So, I lift that up. I had the opportunity yesterday to go to a start meeting, and that's our Students and Transition Resource Team. It's our community-based transition team that is part of ESE. And we had a joint meeting with the Family Care Council here. I just have to lift up, we just have some amazing people in our ESE departments, and they just go to the ends of the earth, it seems like, to try and provide our students with disabilities options. And especially at this time when every department is losing money, and so much of what ESE is having to do in transition is about finding services, and there's less and less resources for those services. So, that team is just a wonderful collaborative team, and I just have so much respect for them. From the PBS plan. They're just, and again, that PBS plan, which is all part of that team, I just have such respect for, so I lift that up, and I think that's all I've got.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I, I guess as you know, Ginger and I went to Tallahassee two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Two weeks now, somewhere.
And we actually had, in one of our meetings, Tony Bennett, the new Commissioner of Education, came and talked to us, told us what a great guy he was gonna be, how he was not gonna be, he's not, he's not the last commissioner. Wasn't, he's not gonna be like the last commissioner. But he is very much pro-parent choice, so there you go. And we had a very long discussion with Senator Dean. We walked in basically unannounced, so we were able to get in. And then we had 45 minutes, I think, with Senator Smith.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. It was really, I mean, didn't have anybody in there, and Dawn was at the front desk, and she got up and immediately said, "Come on," and so we had some nice conversation with her, the whole education story and and other things, but we talked a lot about these issues. So, that was, that was a nice opportunity.
It beats having to chase them down.
Well, you know, I
We didn't try, we didn't try the persona. We didn't go that way.
And I think I've always
I didn't really need.
I've always been a little
I might say.
Yeah, to knock indoors in Tallahassee, because if it's our representatives, we certainly can meet them here. But, at the same time, it was, it was, we were glad we did it. It was very good, it was a really good meeting.
I think they were glad to see us.
Yeah, it was just timing was just perfect. We just couldn't have made a better time to have done that. So, that was really nice. I said to Emma both, "Thank you," and I said that.
I know that, thank you.
So, anyway, so, I see, Spike in the back. We all have, when we read the newspaper, we know what some of our other boards, our brother, brother boards are experiencing in the dynamics of how we do our jobs. And as we had a little bit of discussion today, and often I hear my name, and I know I'm guilty, is that as individual board members, we need to remember that we have zero authority.
All right.
Zero. And only as a group collectively, when we vote or come to a verbal consensus, should we direct anybody to do anything. And I think that's been our belief.
Yes.
But I'm not so sure that our staff sometimes always follows that belief. I think if they hear one of us pipe up, then they take it as marching orders. And I've heard complaints recently, and I said, "That was me, but that wasn't this year, that was two years ago." I'm surprised that you're still doing that. And I go, "Well, once a board member asks, we're gonna do it until the board members is stuck." So, I've heard your name mentioned more recently on several issues, and complaints along with that, not because it's you, but just because it's generating work for people, our staff members, who are already up to here with work and requests. And I have to ask myself, if I'm responsible for making someone go out and do a report or collect information, and it's just for my information, is that really within my realm of responsibility and authority to even do that? Should I not have, have even requested someone do something or fear that they would actually do it before an opportunity to come through this board and say, "Do you all want this?" Our staff is very compliant. They want to do what we ask them to do, and they want to make us happy. Almost to a point where they're, they're willing to spend time and effort without complaint and without letting us know how much time and effort they've invested in a project, when maybe it was just somebody, somebody just happened to mention something or it was an idea. So, I think we should take a lesson from what happens in other boards and maybe go back and reexamine, because we will have a new board member joining us in a little while. And that board member's going to come to us with no campaign speeches and no promises and no time to examine what the motives are and what they want to accomplish. So, I think that would not be the time to go back and say, "Let's see, how do we wanna do our business?" So, I think if we can be very clear in defining, again, how we as a board act and how we as individual board members don't act, and request that our staff be really sensitive to that and really pay attention to that, that maybe we can prevent some of these kinds of things that are happening at the County Commission, because maybe those things weren't clearly defined until it became a problem. Now, once it becomes a problem, it's really hard to solve that problem without being accused of singling out a certain member and trying to censor them or silence them. Because that's, that's what the appearance will be. If you don't, if you don't define what, what our expectations are for each other before that arises. So, I just thought we might learn from, from what we're reading in the paper about board and try not to get into that.
And I think for the most part, you need that we answer things that the people that you're asking, they already
Speaking of might, Ms. Powers, thank you.
They already have the knowledge, and you're just asking for access to that knowledge that they have. It's not something that you go and have to research. It's something that you would have the knowledge.
You would think.
Now, it's something, yeah.
You would think.
Or you wouldn't ask if a person, you didn't feel they had the knowledge, you'd ask somebody else you felt did have it.
Okay, well, let me give you an example. Somebody was just talking to me today, Mr. Sloman, about a coming presentation. He was just mentioning in general, you know, he says, "Well, you know," he says, "We're making a presentation to you all, I don't know, sometime in the next month or so, about accountability and return on investment." And he said, "You know, on SAI positions." He said, "You know, Chris Bossy had said he spent 40 hours." I said, "What are you talking about?" And he said, "Well, you guys wanted, you know, to hear about the SAI positions and their effectiveness." I said, "You know, I, you know, it's like, it's like the roasts, when they cut the ends off the roasts and put it in the pan, and then that's the recipe forever." I kinda remember that being an issue based on the jobs money from two or three years ago. Remember, we went and spent the jobs money all on SAI or aides? And we said, "Okay, well, let's, you know, that was a big investment. How did that work out?" Was it effective, was it not? This is something we need to continue. And so, then after that comes a yearly report. I think that's an example of how we need to monitor what we are asking for and be clear, because staff is doing a lot of work, under the assumption that it's something that we would continually want. You know, the issue, it was something that we just had the other, the, the cursive writing. They made a major presentation to us about this. They spent a lot of time. I felt really a little guilty about how much time they had spent, because they didn't need to go so overboard. But they want to make sure that we're informed, and they want to do what they think we want them to do. So, that's why I'm saying
And that is a good example, because a question about that, you ask the people who deal with it all the time.
Right.
And, but certainly, the answer can come back pretty rapidly on it.
Sure.
But you're right, they, they wanted to do such an excellent job that they really did an excellent job, much more than you thought was coming to you. So, that's a very good example. And maybe what you're saying is, we should make parameters.
Yes, we should make parameters. I think that not only should we make parameters and expectations clear that even when we go and look at our yearly data, we should probably, y'all, some of you out there, should bring to us a preliminary checklist. What exactly is it that you want to know this year? How much depth of information do you want budget-wise? How much, we, sometimes we do discuss. How much detail do you want? And it sometimes changes. You know, we used to get a gigantic book, sometimes we've gone to nothing. So, I think it's something that we probably need to address to make sure that the staff is clear about what our expectations are or what they're not. I would hate for people to spend a lot of time doing research or gathering data that we really didn't need to have that much or that much detail. And we can always ask for more if, if we get, you know, sort of an overlying snippet or, you know, summation, and then say, "Well, you know, we'd like to have a little more detail." But I think, again, if we can commit to making sure that we do not direct anybody to do work unless we have agreed as a group to do that, and to ask our staff that if they think they're getting, somebody calls and says, "Can you do this for me?", that either Superintendent tells them, "You need to direct that I'll deal with the board member," or "You need to tell the board member, you know, can we wait until you have a board meeting so we can have some consensus on that?" And I'm sure they don't want to say that to us.
I'm sure they don't. And I don't want people to have extra work because of me.
No, and you know, and I'm not even, I'm not even so much following what happened in the County Commission, because Ms. Hemmle and I have been here during those days, those dark days, and Ms. Powers, every day versus, when there was really such a disruption to the workings of the school board because of those kinds of questions and requests of information and those chasing down the rabbit holes and spending so much time, almost to the point of being a disruption. And I'm not so sure if it was purposeful or not.
It was purposeful.
Okay, you said it. But
Of course I did.
When you have five people, one person should not be able to control the agenda and to direct the staff to do what they think needs to be done. If you are on a board, you're elected to be part of a board, and the same people elected you as your teammates. So, there shouldn't be, "I have, I have a voice, and I have the agenda, and I have the calling card, and I'm going to do it." And the rest, you don't want to do it, then, then you're of no value. We never want to see ourselves being, but this school board, not us here, but this school board has been in that position in the past with different members.
That's correct.
We all have the potential for getting into this quagmire. So, that's why I'm just suggesting, especially before you get a new board member, that we be clear. And I don't know if we want to have a policy. Would it take a policy to say how board members request information? What are the chain command of requests or what do they
Be very careful, because, because
Guidelines making?
Always, at least I've seen it go, when you request something, it's because the request is made so you want to have some information, you've already researched it before you ever asked, or you have knowledge of it, but to make a decision. And I don't think ever should that be quelled, that no, you can't have information. Never. And I don't think you have to have every board member agree that you'd like to have information on who's teaching, say, phonics and what grade. That, information like that almost is automatic. You ask the question, you should get the answer. And you're not asking for a detailed research, footnote in paper. You're just asking, "How many 23 teachers in those elementary schools are teaching?" That, that's all you're asking for. Is it being taught, or is it not being taught, or teaching?
But you're very likely to get a detailed footnote in report, though.
But that's what I'm saying. When you suggested that, "Let's have the parameters." I think within the request should be the parameters, so we are not asking more than really we want. We just want something very simple. You know, how many students are there in, in Citrus County? If one entered this afternoon, you don't have to have that person counted, you're asking for a pretty close number, you know.
One of the things, and when I first came on, because I know that was just a concern of mine, and I actually had an opportunity that Ms. Deutschman was the chairperson at the time, and I remember asking that question. And she kinda gave me a parameter that just has stuck with me, and, believe me, I'm, can be as guilty as anyone. But that was that if it was
I know that.
Is, is that if it was something that was already a report that we'd done, like, for example, number of students, things like that, I can, I know I could call, and it's a report that's already done. I could just say, "Could you email me that?" As opposed to if it was something that we had to generate, because there wasn't a report that we'd already done or shared, then I needed to come back and talk to the board and say, "You know, is that something we all want to have staff put together?" And that, so that it was a difference between whether it was something we already had done or something would have to be done.
From scratch.
From scratch.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's a different
And that was to, and I've tried to follow that. I don't know if that's, Ms. Deutschman, if you're still, if it was something that's already available and we're asking for another copy of it, or particularly in these cases, it's emails, and it's already done. I mean, you know, Chuck Dixon will say, "You know, how many kids do we have? Can you just send me the report?" And he's already, he generates a report to you guys, so it's just sending me. I don't usually have a problem with that as an individual. But if I said, "Hey, I need you to compile how many we have, blah, blah, blah." Well, now I'm asking for something, I need to come back and get consensus from my other board members.
So, why don't we, why don't we say that, that everything needs to be by consensus of the board or through the chairman?
I think that's
Well, no, I'm gonna tell you about the chairman, though. And you're going to be having conversations with your fellow board members that could buy away some time on it.
That's true.
So, that's why we have a superintendent.
Consensus of the board, how about that?
Consensus of the board, and I would say that most requests by the school board member should be funneled through the superintendent.
Ah, there you go.
You know, so, and I, and I think, and she should be the film. And you should be willing to say, you know, not, you know, let me check with the staff if they feel or think it's gonna take, you know.
Too much time.
Too much time. So, if the board wants it, we're fine with that.
Or, why don't you ask at the next board meeting?
I mean, and I, and like I say, I think we're guilty of this not purposely. I don't think any of us want to cause people to
Corruption.
When I have when it happens.
Scandal.
But it happens, and so, I think what we need to do is just monitor ourselves for the purpose of going forward in the future.
And I, I think what Thomas said, if it's newly, new information, like how many gophers on the school property, that is a whole different world than how many students are enrolled in Citrus County schools. So, if it's new information, you're asking for people to do a lot of work. If it's information that's already there, you're not asking a lot except just to be told.
Give it to me.
Right, it's already compiled.
Yeah.
People already know. And perhaps you've asked the wrong person, and that could be it. And they could say, "Well, I really don't have that in hand, but Patrick has it. You know, ask him." Patrick, what is it? Oh, here it is.
Do you have anything else with Pat? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so this thing that I just handed out to you is a kids' triathlon. It's for children, 5 through 15. It's going to be May 11 at Whispering Pines. It's gonna be a swim and a run and a bicycle, I think. Triathlon, that's what it's called.
Three things.
Triathlon, that's what it's called. Anyway, looks like a fun, fun day. I promised I would be there, even though it's the day after. Mark this on your calendar. Our picnic in the park, May 10? Yeah, May 10. Our picnic. And you have to load this one with money. I know you will. I know you will.
Oh, I'll be here.
May 10 is appreciation?
I'll be here.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have.
May 10 is Friday?
Yeah. That's the picnic in the park. And then the next day is the triathlon at Whispering Pines for our children. And I think that's all I have.
And Ms. Planta, Ben Allen is one of the guests today.
Yes, she is.
Oh, we could And she's a sister of
Our information filter.
Couple things to add on what Patrick said. It is true when a board member goes to one of the staff members, they are, they are very willing to drop everything and get you a report. So, we'll give them direction that when you all, if somebody comes and asks for something, bring it to us, we'll make sure it's not in the, on bars in different departments. And if it's a board presentation or something, then we'll just bring it forward and say, "We're ready to bring that," and say, "That's ready to go." And we'll just waddle through this and make sure that's, because we don't want to stop the board members from going to get information or just information that, you know, it's available in some sense. But we'll work on it. Because I do know that they will
They will, I know.
Yes. And you're right, and the present, they don't want to leave anything out in the presentation.
Right.
But maybe some of this old, not old information, but information you had, it's just
They want to make an A.
They do, they want the gold star.
I know, I know.
Kenny and I were in Tallahassee last week, and we did visit the top aide for the president, Senate President, and also the House Speaker. We met with both their aides, so we got the cards. And of course, I'm back in Lawrence, Citrus County. We did, we didn't get to see Charlie, who's on the floor in the committee meetings, but we met with Chase. And as usual, you get their representative meetings with us and all that, so you can tell me that in the morning, and then We got to Whitford's office, one of the ladies suggested how we go back and do what makes things happen, so we went back and retracked a little bit.
Well, we're on the subject of Representative Dean, he said something, Senator Dean, thank you, one title, Senator Dean, he said something that caught my attention, he wants to get rid of the whole DOE. And I thought, huh. He said, "Not one of those people over there was ever elected."
Well, the commissioner used to be.
The commissioner used to be.
No, I know, I know. Not one of those people over there have to be elected. And I was just bragging on Tony Bennett, because he was so much better than the guy before.
He was terrible.
Yeah.
He keeps saying he's getting offended by anybody.
No, and he had, he said, Tony Bennett said, "I may not know the answer." And I thought, whoa, a real human being.
He is pro-choice for parents, but he, more importantly, he supports good schools. That's what he said, "I support good schools."
That's what he says, that's why he got fired in the end.
Really?
And they don't want good schools in the town.
We also support Common Core, and they didn't want to do that.
But anyways, go ahead, boys. All right, this meeting's now adjourned.